...
Called January Monthly Board Meeting to Order, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Winter Break Times Two. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. King that makes the motion, do I have a second? Mr. Dearing's second, all in favor, show hands. Motion carries. Citizens' statements?
Thank you, Mr. President, we had no one request participation under policy BDDH.
Written communication?
Had no written communications either.
District announcements?
Yes, just, I was thinking military, but we're not here, okay. Tonight, we will recognize the 6th Grade Center and Waynesville Career Center. I appreciate all of you that came in this evening after the unscheduled day off today. But I do appreciate everything that you do, thank you very much, and we look forward to recognizing you this evening. Later on the agenda, we'll be recognizing our school board members as well for their service as part of the Missouri School Board Recognition Week. But before we do that, I just want to personally thank each of you for all that you do. As I'll remark in just a few moments, the high pay and the minimal hours on the clock right now. But we do appreciate the volunteer service that you have for our kids and our community. On February 12th, the district will host the R6 Youth Poetry Art Slam focused on a diversity theme at 6:00 PM in the lecture hall at Waynesville High School. The Winter Festival of Nations has been rescheduled for Friday, February 21st. The festival will begin at 4:30 PM in the Waynesville High School gym before the boys' basketball games. Early admission is $2 per person, after 5:15 it is $4 per person. Because of our snow days, Waynesville School will be in session on May 21st, 22nd, 26th, and 27th, making the 27th our last day of school as of right now. Graduation remains May the 15th. As of now, we will have President's Day off on February the 17th, and the district and Fort Leonard Wood will partner to present the Second Annual Community Salute to Service on Thursday, April 23rd. Please save the date, thank you.
Thank you, you want to knock on wood on that?
Yeah, I've knocked on a lot of wood here, I think I... We're gonna go to school in the morning, we're gonna go to school in the morning.
Financials, Dr. Berger.
Thank you, Mr. President. For January 10th, 2020, MOSIP account, $38,271,708. CDs, $10.5 million. With Bank of Crocker, in our general account, $1,475,091. Payroll account, $2,923. Total funds for 110, $50,249,723.97.
Thank you, do I have a motion to approve consented agenda items A through G? Mr. Quinn makes a motion, do I have a second? Pondrum's second, all in favor, show hands. Motion carries. Spotlight on Education, December Spotlight on Education. This is go forth.
Good evening, my name is Barb Lehman. Tonight I have the privilege to honor Mrs. Leann Phipps and Mrs. Kristy Lawton for our Spotlight on Education. Leann Phipps is in her second year of teaching. WSGC has been fortunate to have her both of these years. Ms. Phipps is always so positive and friendly to staff and students. She is consistently encouraging others with positive praise and hoping for others to do their best. Ms. Phipps always has her students engaged in hand-on learning with her classroom. Her students look up to her and learn well from her teaching style. She is always upbeat in her classroom and it shows throughout her students' learning. When staff were asked about Ms. Phipps, they stated she is a great person all around to both students and staff. She is always willing to help with concerns or ideals. Another staff member stated, "Our building is very lucky to have such a great staff member." One student stated, "Ms. Phipps is always kind and caring. She knows many ways to educate you and her room always feels cozy." I now have the honor to introduce Mrs. Kristy Lawton. She is in her second year at WSGC as a paraprofessional, and she has been a paraprofessional for five years. Mrs. Lawton wears many different hats and does it very well. She is always willing to help where she is needed, whether it is one-on-one with a student, working with a group of students, or doing one of her assigned duties. Mrs. Lawton always has a smile on her face and she spreads positivity through the school. When asked by students, they stated, "Mrs. Lawton is always kind and caring. She uses positive praise when students do the right thing."
Congratulations.
I'm super excited tonight to give our Collaborative Team Spotlight Award to our math team. We have several of them present, Ms. Erst, Mrs. Jackson, Ms. Manier, Ms. Phipps, Ms. Rowland, Ms. Schram, and Ms. Nelson. On the pre-test for standard 6 point NS point C, apply and extend previous understanding of numbers to the system of rational numbers, .002% of their students were proficient and advanced. On the post-test, 71% of students were proficient and advanced, and after reteaching and retesting, 79% of their students were proficient and advanced. The strategy used to teach the standard was descriptive feedback. Using the Go Math Online Trainer, this allowed teachers to differentiate instruction and students to practice while receiving immediate feedback. The 6th grade math team works together to ensure every student learns.
Congratulations, very good. January Spotlight on Education, Mr. Rhodes and Dr. Passan.
Thank you, Mr. President, Mr. Rhodes cannot be here, so I'm going to recognize our staff. Mr. Strube, Shane Strube, is our Certified Spotlight on Education recipient. He could not be here this evening, but I want to read a little bit about him. Shane is the lead advisor for Skills USA at WCC. It is a lot of extra work, in times he is taking care of multiple things at a time, plus teaching his students. Shane also started a Chromebook repair class, which is giving these students a real-world opportunity in the field, plus it's helping getting their Chromebooks repaired and returned to students and teachers who need them. He also helps with a lot of tech issues and needs at WCC and will help anyone if they ask. "Mr. Strube is who we strive to be as teachers," said one of those teachers wrote about him. "Not only is he an outstanding educator, but he consistently goes above and beyond to make everyone around him successful." Whether a student in Skills USA or a fellow teacher needing tech advice, Shane always takes time to make WCC the best place to work. Congratulations, Mr. Strube, on being selected as a WCC Certified Staff Member Spotlight on Education recipient. Our Classified Recipient is Mr. Chase Denbecker, if he would come up here. Chase takes on many roles at WCC. Examples include filling in for program instructors at the last minute, working with individual and small groups of students assisting with accreditation items, taking on many special products, and transporting our student interns. Chase is flexible and he's always willing to do whatever is needed to make the student experience at WCC a positive one. In his first year at WCC, Chase has earned the respect of WCC staff members and students and contributes to a positive staff morale. The WCC staff appreciates everything Chase does and every day for the students at WCC. Congratulations on being selected as a WCC Classified Staff Member Spotlight on Education recipient. For our PLC team, I would like to recognize our team number three, if you guys will come up here, you have such a creative name. Mrs. Wessel, Mrs. Trustee, Mr. Rodden, Mr. Jones, and Mr. Hoffman consistently work hard to improve student achievement within their specific programs as well as the building. While program objectives may vary greatly, each member of the PLC team provides quality input each Wednesday and has worked hard to maintain up-to-date student performance. Just for an example for you, I have a math teacher, a practical nursing instructor, a welding instructor, auto service, and masonry, so they're quite different group. Additionally, this PLC group was instrumental in the development of our building-wide work readiness rubric. Their hard work and dedication to the PLC process is very much appreciated.
Congratulations, everybody. Move on to Second Quarter Project Teach Award, Mrs. Bells.
Thank you, Mr. President, Mr. Mike Freeman from Cellar Sexton Auto Group is here tonight to present this quarter's $100 award to Sarah Seibert from Waynesville Middle School.
Glad you're here, I'm Mike. Pleasure. Well, it's an honor for me to be here this evening again to recognize your outstanding teachers and these individuals who put these programs together are what's making a difference to our children today. I'd like to read to you, if I could, regards to what, Mrs., is it Seibert? Seibert with a long I, very good. Students become engineers as they design and build accurate and precise catapults using common materials. Working through the engineering design process, they will use their catapults to launch various materials of different textures to attempt to hit various targets. Seventh grade fun, sounds to me like. Our engineers will collect, analyze data, and then redesign their catapults to meet their engineering challenge, to hit stationary and moving targets. We would also invite engineers from Fort Leonard Wood, which we appreciate them very much, to assist in the engineering design process. The learning objectives for our unit is not just fun, it's about conducting an investigation, determining relationships among the energy transferred, the type of matter, the mass, and the change in temperature of the sample. They construct arguments to support the claim that when kinetic energy of an object changes, energy is transferred to or from the object. And they developed a model to demonstrate the relationship between distance and potential energy. Again, seventh graders. At the advanced level of EDP, students will be able to evaluate the change in potential energy due to height and analyze the changes from kinetic to potential energy in a student model. As you can see, Mrs. Seibert is your engineering class, I would assume, for seventh graders, is that correct, Si? Just plain PE and joint, PE class, right? No, it is science. The engineering design process is an important aspect of solving engineering challenges, and this process refers to the steps of designing, building, and testing and redesigning a product or system through many iterations in order to achieve solutions that adequately meet the objectives. You sure this is not a college class in seventh grade? That's good. That's what makes her your second quarter teacher of the quarter, and that must what making a difference for our students today, and I think you would agree, engineering is absolutely so important for the growth of our nation and for us as a whole. So, great job, your second quarter teacher of the quarter, would you make her, let her know of your appreciation.
Did you have any words for us tonight? Uh-huh, that's what I thought.
Picture time, give me the Lowe's card more often.
Excellent job, very good. What about you next time?
Great project, very good.
Congratulations again, thank you, Mike, Cellar Sexton, for all you do. December Transportation Employee of the Month, Mrs. Bells.
Thank you, Mr. President, it's again my honor and privilege to announce the December Transportation Employee of the Month, which goes to Jerika Rosenhour. Jerika has been a school bus driver for us for the past two years. She has recently helped in assembling a substitute driver packet and has helped restructure some of our regular routes. Jerika is reliable and dependable and is willing to go above and beyond for our students every day, which is why she's December's Transportation Employee of the Month, congratulations, Jerika.
Well, let me give her her certificate, my bad, here we go, Jerika. Congratulations, thank you.
I understand the January Transportation Employee of the Month's got a big speech, I think Mr. Wilkens was telling me about. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President, it's again my honor and privilege to recognize January's Transportation Employee of the Month, who really doesn't need an introduction. Linda has been a member of our Transportation Department for 29 years. She has served as a school bus driver, school bus driver trainer, and is currently an administrative assistant in our Transportation Office. If you know Linda, you know that she is a true professional. She is very passionate about her role and the operation of transportation for students in our district. She is an excellent mentor and role model to all that work with her, and we are going to greatly miss her because Linda has decided to retire at the end of this school year. So, it's my honor again to congratulate Linda as January Transportation Employee of the Month and also to wish her well in her retirement. We will miss you, Ms. Linda.
Congratulations. Board recognition, Dr. Henry.
Good evening, everyone, again, thank you for coming out, we do appreciate that. I've talked to Mr. Wilking, he's going to take care of the weather from now on out, so things will be taken care of for us for the rest of the week, right? Every year, we pick a week to recognize the contributions of our elected Board of Directors. In the Waynesville School District, we are fortunate to have a high-quality board, a high-quality group of board members who place the needs of our students in improving our learning environment above all other issues affecting our school district. Our Board of Education has an effective blend of member experiences from public and private sectors, which creates a meaningful dialogue representing multiple perspectives that results in quality decisions for our students. Board members commit a great deal of time to their position and receive no monetary compensation, which further demonstrates the level of commitment they have to our children and this community. In addition, board members are often subject to a great deal of scrutiny in the public, but must maintain an unbiased perspective to make decisions in the best interests of the students they serve. It's a challenging position, but one that comes with many non-monetary rewards, which include, but certainly are not limited to, the following. The highest district rating in history from the state of Missouri. The creation of new programming to include our diesel program, medical career embedded program, fast-track programs, and criminal justice. The creation of the Pick Alternative Program, the After-School Feeding Program, expansion of Leader and Me throughout our school district, and many more programs that affect student learning. We also have the expansion of advanced placement offerings and a significant increase in the number of students enrolled in advanced placement coursework. The complete renovation of Waynesville Middle School is also going to be nearing completion here in the future, so we really appreciate all the work you've done. And these are just a few examples of what our Board of Education is doing and the results they are achieving. There'll be much more to come. Through the guidance and leadership of our Board of Education, our district has become a model for public schools working with military students in a district with a reputation of excellence throughout the state of Missouri. Thank you to our board members for your commitment to our children and your devotion to our school district. So, thank you, Board. At this time, you might notice there's a few gifts around, and thank you to our buildings and everyone who put that together, certainly deserving of a lot of recognition. I know some great orange and black will be there for them to be wearing at all the events you'll see them at, but I do want to recognize each one individually. This is from the Missouri School Boards Association. MSBA keeps moving their week back, so it's actually going to be in February, but it doesn't coincide with our board meeting, so we're recognizing you and Janie Roy. We may take it back next year, but we won't miss you. So, the first one up that we'll recognize is our president, Mr. Paul Schultz. Next, we have our Vice President, Dr. Leroy Fulmer. Next, we have our Secretary, Mr. Dan Dearing. Next up, we have our Treasurer, Mr. Charles Quinn. Member Mike Keen. And Member, Mr. Aaron Pondrum.
Mrs. Ward would like everyone up front, as part of your recognition, you get a free picture.
Board, thank you again, we appreciate all you do for our kids, thank you.
Yeah, he always says we don't get paid, but I found it in the budget last year to give us 3% raise, and he reminded me 3% of zero is still zero, so.
I totally give them a 100% raise, it'd be, yeah, double your money.
I can speak for everybody up here, with our staff, students, we're useless, so it's a team. We appreciate everybody that works for this district. We appreciate the community like Cellar Sexton that does so much, that makes this district the best in the state, in my opinion. I assume everybody up here's, so. Thanks for all the gifts, we appreciate it. Back to the pay, these cards we get are fantastic. Graduation Day, when we get to shake these kids' hands, is worth a billion dollars, so there's lots of pay here, so thank you, guys. And next, Cellar Sexton.
Thank you, Mr. President, it's again my honor and privilege to do a community recognition tonight for Mr. Mike Freeman and Cellar Sexton Auto Group. Mr. Freeman is passionate not only about our district, but for our students and our teachers, and I look forward to his Project Teach announcements every quarter. They're delivered with such enthusiasm and passion, and it gets us all excited about learning and wanting to be in those teacher classes, so thank you so much for that, Mike, and thank you to Cellar Sexton for your continued support of our district. We appreciate you and want to offer you this certificate.
Yeah, I saw it.
Okay, now we're moving to discussion items, mid-year performance update, Dr. Atkins.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Got a new guy back there, sorry about that, so.
Good evening, tonight I'm going to share our mid-year performance data. I'll be reviewing our district writing prompt data, our standards proficiency, and then our star early literacy, star reading, and star math performance. First, I'm going to start with our district writing prompt. The district writing prompt is utilized across grade levels four times per year to measure student progress in writing towards mastery of end-of-the-year writing standards. The writing prompt presents a student with unfamiliar texts, which they then respond to. This is similar to what a student would see on a state assessment or in real life when they encounter text. The writing prompt is assessed in three areas. Area one is question. This assesses students' ability to develop an idea that addresses the topic of the prompt. In the area of question, 65.3% of students were proficient at the end of second quarter as compared to 48.9% on the first quarter prompt. The end-of-year goal is 80% of students scoring in the proficient range. Area two of the writing prompt is text evidence. This assesses students' ability to respond to the prompt using specific and relevant text-based details. 59.7% of students were proficient in this area on prompt two. Students were not assessed on utilizing text evidence on prompt one. Our first writing prompt was diversity-based, and students drew from their own experiences and therefore did not... and therefore did not utilize text evidence to support their responses. Area three looks at students' use of grade-level appropriate writing conventions. District-wide, 53.8% of students were proficient on writing prompt two. You'll notice ninth and 10th grade were dropped significantly from prompt one to prompt two. On prompt two, they used a different scoring rubric from what was used on prompt one, and so we will be revisiting that rubric and reevaluating its use so we can make sure that we're accurately scoring students. This slide shows standards proficiency at the end of the first semester as compared to this time last year. In grades K through eight, students demonstrated higher levels of proficiency on year-long ELA standards as compared to last year at this time. At the end of second quarter, proficiency in math was inconsistent across grade levels as compared to last year. We have had a number of assessment revisions to our local assessments throughout the year. We have identified several areas of focus from this data with particular focus on K-2 math standards. So, one thing to note, it doesn't mean the standards that they were assessed on in first quarter, this doesn't mean that they dropped on those particular standards. When we looked at the first-quarter standards, we continue to see growth. It's when we add in the new second-quarter standards that we saw a little bit of a dip, but it's important to remember these are year-long standards, so we're really looking at where students are heading by the end of the year. The STAR early literacy assessment is utilized to assess early literacy skills of kindergarten students. At the mid-year benchmark, 74% of students met the proficiency benchmark as compared to 53% at the beginning of the year. So, we've seen really strong growth with our kindergarten students in the area of literacy. The STAR reading test assesses students in the area of reading. All students in grades one through eight are assessed mid-year. The percentage of students meeting the benchmark at each grade level ranged from 53% to 70%. Growth in the percentage of students meeting the benchmark was made in all grade levels except for sixth grade. The reading benchmark is based on a nationally-normed set of student scores. On-level is considered being at the 40th percentile. This means a student earned a scale score that was higher than 40% of the students at that grade level who were part of the norming group. This slide represents the percentage of students who met the STAR reading benchmark at each On this slide, you see the average STAR reading scale score by grade level. The list to the right shows the scale score needed to meet the 40th percentile benchmark of being on-level. A fairly consistent pattern of growth can be seen across grade levels. At all grade levels, the average scale score exceeds the national benchmark. This slide shows the average scale score by building at the elementary level. Across the board, the average scale scores exceeded the mid-year benchmark cut score. This slide shows the average grade-level equivalency for each grade level. At the elementary grade levels, an average of half-years' growth was made from the beginning of the year administration through the mid-year administration. And this data breaks that, this slide breaks down that same data, but by building. The STAR math test assesses students in the area of mathematics. All students in grades one through eight are assessed. The percentage of students meeting the benchmark ranged from 62% to 91%. Growth was made from the beginning of the year assessment to the mid-year assessment in all grade levels, with the exception of seventh grade, which held even at 65%. As with reading, the on-level benchmark is earning a scale score higher than 40% of students in the norming group, and that's, again, that's a national group. And this chart shows where we are at each elementary building by grade level. This slide depicts the average scale score in STAR math by grade level. A fairly consistent pattern can be seen through fifth grade, at which point the scores begin to level out. And the list to the right shows the scale score needed to meet the benchmark. At all grade levels, the average scale score exceeds the mid-year benchmark level. And this slide shows that same information broken down by school and grade level. And again, as we saw in reading, across the board, for every school and every grade level, they do exceed the benchmark standard. Most grade levels met or exceeded an average of a half-years' growth from the beginning of the year administration through the mid-year administration. And at the elementary level in each building, the average grade-level equivalency met or exceeded the tested grade level. This data, and I know there's a lot of it here, this data is monitored at the collaborative team level at the buildings, so those individual PLC teams look at these various pieces of data to see the trends and to identify their areas of focus. The building administrators monitor it at their building level, and then when we come together as a district leadership team. And we use this information to help us as we make adjustments in instructional planning and making adjustments to our district curriculum to make sure we're meeting student needs. Are there any questions?
Questions or comments? Thank you, Dr. Atkins.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Technology report, Mr. Henson and Mr. Harrison.
Give my partner a little time here. He's pulling double duty tonight.
Thank you, Mr. President. You get a tag-team effort from me and Mr. Henson here tonight. I'm going to be speaking towards the infrastructure side, and Mr. Henson will be speaking towards the instructional side. So, from the infrastructure standpoint, our goals for, our focus areas for this year, this goes back to our CSIP goals, is to provide and maintain appropriate instructional resources, support services, and a cyber-safe environment. From the instructional side, promote the effective use of technology within our one-to-one Infrastructureal technology, that's my group of guys right there. I couldn't ask for a better group of guys to work with. And the picture on the right there, we were really excited this summer. We did an internship program with those two guys, Alex Casper and Matt Rowden. Both of them went through WCC, one through Shane Strube's class and one through Shannen Hefton's class. They came in and worked for us this summer, and they got some really good hands-on experience, and we got some really good help with them. You know, they really helped us getting the Chromebooks out the door this summer. And then also, I want to give a big shout-out to Ms. Long. She was able to get us about five AmeriCorps members this summer, and they really helped out as well. So, it was kind of an all-hands-on-deck effort to get those Chromebooks out the door this summer. What we do, from a hardware standpoint, we manage approximately 13,000 end-user devices, and that number climbs on a daily basis. We manage the network in collaboration with K-12 ITC. We manage the data center in collaboration with K-12 ITC, and that has really come to fruition, especially this year, that partnership with K-12 ITC, with our implementation of Tyler Technologies. Typically, with an implementation that big, we would be looking at purchasing around $100,000 to $150,000 worth of equipment to install that software on. With K-12 ITC, with their partnership, as part of their contract, I put in Help Desk ticket, and within a couple days, I've got the servers built, and it's all built into our contract, so that's been a really beneficial partnership with them. We manage the intercoms and clocks, phones, security cameras, and the door access control systems. From an application standpoint, we manage email, Google, all the G-Suite apps, web filter, gaggle, phone call manager system, student information system, financial information system, and all the food services software. Our projects, day-to-day, are Help Desk tickets. So far this year, we've closed about 1,500 support tickets, so we stay pretty busy with that. It's been a big help, as Dr. Patterson mentioned. We implemented a career-embedded course this year. Shane Strube comes over to the high school an hour a day and has, what, about 10 students, I think? And they are the front line for the Chromebook repair. They come in here and they fix the Chromebooks, and it's been a big load off of us and a great experience for them as well, so that's been a really good thing so far. Project Edge this year, the summer, we deployed about 4,500 Chromebooks. You can see Mr. Pritchard down there at the bottom. That's him unloading the first pallet of Chromebooks off the truck. And then over on the right there, that is, over here in this room in front of me here, we had the Chromebook stage for the high school. That's about 1,500 Chromebooks sorted alphabetically by grade level, ready to deploy to the students. Tyler Technology, or new intercom system also this year. We've rolled out a new intercom system throughout the district. Then Tyler Technologies is a big project. You know, that's the CISTK-12, and then the Munis is our new student information system and our new financial system that we're implementing this year. We've done a lot of work on that this year. On the student side, we implement a sandbox team where we've got a core group of sample employees throughout the district, teachers, secretaries, guidance counselors, administrators. And what we've done is we've built a test in, like a sandbox environment, and allowed them to get in there and kick the tires, so to speak, and we've gave them a list of specific topics to go through, start going through the motions of their daily, what they're going to be doing in there, and then we've given them the opportunity to record their questions, concerns, and comments in there, and then we're using that information to really target our training as we go through the implementation of that throughout this year. Security cameras, we implemented a new security camera system at East Elementary last year. In a few weeks, we'll start Freedom Elementary, and we're also working this year towards upping the coverage in the remaining elementary schools and the playground areas especially, and then eventually, we're working towards upgrading the systems at all the schools. And then the Phase Two at the middle school, that's going to kick into full effect here in just a few months for us. We'll be down there, doing our thing down there, getting all the technology stuff in place. On the horizon for us, one of our CSIP, our action plans is to come up with a long-term technology plan, mainly for the Chromebooks, the one-to-one initiative. So, a long-term plan for that, this year, we'll be purchasing approximately 400 to 500 new Chromebooks, next year, approximately 400 to 500, and that's to put back in the cycle and replace the ones that have been broken or lost. And by the third year, we're looking at purchasing approximately 1,200 to 1,500, and then that's the number we're going to be at per year from that point on of doing our four-year replacement plan, where we'll be cycling those back in. So, that's our long-term technology plan for the one-to-one initiative. Presentation devices, another thing on our radar. The technology has not really caught up with that yet. We're sitting really good right now. We have, we're really good as far as projectors, and we've got clever boards at the middle school, got smart boards in a lot of places. The technology's not really caught up as far as a device that kind of does everything that we want to do in the classroom, so we're kind of looking ahead for, you know, for something that's going to be the silver bullet in our classrooms that allows the students collaborate and also for the cost effectiveness of those devices to come down as well. Cybersecurity is another area that we're closely monitoring, you know, with all the mass amount of data that we collect for our students and our staff, and then the attacks that, you know, that come in constantly, we are really keeping a close eye on cybersecurity and the things that come down the pike on that. And then trends in educational technology, one of the big things that I see coming in the future is virtual reality, and then also artificial intelligence, and being able to identify, you know, using big data and artificial intelligence to identify patterns and focus areas on students, and being able to, you know, kind of predict where they're heading and also being able to use that information to really focus on individualized student learning. And then also, you know, looking at those things that are coming down the pike in the future and making sure that our devices and our infrastructure is in place now to be prepared for those things in two to three years. So, that's all I have from an infrastructural standpoint. Mr. Henson said he's going to keep his under 45 minutes, so.
All right. On the instructional side of technology, I'd like to start out by talking about the one-to-one program, Project Edge. Dr. Henry talked about a lot of your accomplishments earlier as a board. One thing that I would like to bring up as an accomplishment as well is we wouldn't be one-to-one without the support of you, the board, so thank you for that. Some things that we have done with the one-to-one Project Edge, we have developed a parent webpage with relevant information, an informational video, and FAQ section. The reason I bring that up is when we first piloted the one-to-one program at the sixth grade center, I did have informational meetings. We found that by providing that instructional video, it was easier for parents to learn about the program instead of coming in with a big, large crowd, because a lot of them had a lot of questions, and we couldn't get to all of them. This way, by watching the video, I had an email address set up, Project Edge email. If they had a question, they can email me, and I can respond back. Right now, with the one-to-one program, all students have a device to use. All kindergarten classrooms have a cart of iPads throughout the district, and there's enough iPads in each cart to support the class. The one thing that we will have to do with iPads, I'll work with Aaron's team, some of them are getting some age to them, meaning that if you know anything about an Apple device, it eventually gets to a point where they won't let you update it anymore. So, we're getting to that point with a few of our iPads, but we're working with Mr. Harrison's team to get those replaced, so our team, our team on Mr. Harrison's side here, they can manage those iPads like they need to be managed. Our first and second grade classrooms, they all have MacBooks. Each classroom has a cart of MacBooks that will service those kids. The way it works is each kid has a MacBook assigned to them, so they come back and use the same MacBook every day. So, if there's ever issues with it, or if we ever see one needing repair more often than others, we know who it's assigned to. And those MacBooks came from sixth through 12th grade, getting the Chromebooks. We just took their devices they had, because they were still good, and we were able to push those down to our first and second grade classrooms. Eventually, what we would like to see is, once those MacBooks do come to an end of life, is that we will start taking Chromebooks and replacing those MacBook carts as Chromebook carts. It's just more cost-effective, and the management of those Chromebooks is much easier. Third through 12th grade, they all have Chromebooks. In grades three, four, and five, they are cart-based. Once again, it's kind of like the MacBooks. They have a device that is assigned to them. The kids come and use the same device every day. And then six through 12 is when we start taking the Chromebooks home. I think it was a big challenge this year to get those out, but with the support of all of our administrators, our buildings, our library media specialists, our techs in the buildings, it went pretty smooth to distribute as many devices as we pushed out this year. Along with the one-to-one Project Edge, we have the one-to-one risk solutions. That is the insurance program that we did, the voluntary insurance program that we do offer. Right now, we have 818 that have paid for the damage waiver protection. 99 claims are put in for first semester. I would like to brag on our students just a little bit, because they have been taking care of these devices. You would think as many as we pushed out, there would be more than 99 claims for first semester. Now, some have come back, but it was warranty work. It wasn't damage that a student did, it's just the device had defects, so we was able to send it off as warranty work. But only 99 claims for first semester. Of those 99 claims, 67 of those claims were students who had the insurance. So, along with one-to-one, we want to make sure within our classrooms, teachers are using them in a way for students to learn. It's called blended learning. So, that is a CSIP action step, blended learning training for all faculty. Over on the right is a picture, I believe, that's our fifth-grade team at Freedom, getting blended learning training from their library media and tech specialist. So, the progress we've made so far with blended learning is PD, as it was provided, the back-to-school workshops for all of our teachers. When we have district-wide PD days, we also try to push in some type of blended learning training. At our buildings, do monthly PD, blended learning training is being pushed out. We also have asked our library media specialists and our techs to go out and do blended learning observations. So far, for first semester, they did 420 observations, and they have a set of look-for's that they use when they go in the classroom that kind of helps them identify, okay, what model blended learning is being used. This is just some photos of our kids using the technology that they do have. Technology, as we know, helps increase student engagement, allows for creativity, allows our students to be problem solvers, and also allows for teamwork. So, to end it here, just real quick, like, I can't, I want to make sure I say thank you again to our patrons who may be watching for the Proposition One that did help bring a lot, that did help increase or accelerate the one-to-one program. We appreciate that. We appreciate the central administration, their support. And, you know, I've been in the district over twenty years now and I have never met a board that, that has not supported, uh, technology. So thank you for that and I appreciate that. So at this time, Mr. Harrison and I will take any questions you may have.
Any comments or questions? Thank you both very much. MSBA policy and procedure update. Dr. Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. We did have a tabs meeting, uh, a few weeks ago, uh, in this, uh, in this particular set, which there are obviously many. Uh, there were a few things that, that came out, uh, to, uh, to consider. Uh, I would just point out, uh, policy GCI and policy GDI dealt with the reassignment of staff. Uh, and what that basically says is that if a change in salary or wages occurs to the, to the good or bad, uh, with certified or classified staff, that needs to have board approval. One thing that we discussed was, uh, we do have situations where there needs to be, uh, emergency occurs or something, we need to move somebody in a position and maybe they're, uh, they have a differential in that pay where it's, where it's to their benefit, but we have to do it immediately. Uh, so the question came up was, uh, whether this, uh, policy constrained us in doing that? And the answer back was no, it's just the board has to have that, uh, on the next agenda. It doesn't say it has to happen preceding, it can happen afterwards. So, uh, that question came up. It is in the stack and it's been addressed. Uh, policy JFCL, uh, deals with, uh, a new piece to A-plus funding where it allows high school students, uh, to take college courses paid through A-plus funds. Uh, however, uh, that cannot happen unless there's remaining funds at the state level for A-plus. Uh, so there's been very little in terms of, of guidelines written for that at this point in time. Uh, in discussing it, uh, with, with our team, the thought was we, we go ahead and leave it in the stack. That way if something does come up, uh, in, in the near future, we can, our kids would be able to take advantage of it, but, uh, uh, I think there's a little skepticism out there as far as how much money will be available, when that will come around. So that's, that, that, you know, was the, the situation, or situation with JFCL. And then finally, um, uh, it was an administrative procedure, JO dash AP two regarding, uh, the releasing of images. Uh, as you all know, uh, it's, uh, much more prevalent, uh, in our schools today to have video, uh, in, in, pretty much everywhere you go and in public areas of, of our buildings, uh, you know, playgrounds, uh, places like that. Uh, this was a policy attempting to, to make some, um, guidelines and stipulations for releasing those images to parents, uh, in discussion with our attorney and she's, she's very supportive of, of the MSBA policy service, as are we, and very, uh, very pleased with it. We did, uh, decide that at this point in time, it would be better to pull this AP out of the stack, so you do not have it in there and refer directly to FERPA guidelines on that versus, uh, uh, creating new procedures. So there has been one pulled out of your, your stack on that. So, uh, given all that, we had a good, good tabs meeting, a lot of discussion, appreciate board member involvement in that as always, uh, but that's, uh, that's there for your first reading and, and if you have any questions now or, uh, prior to the next meeting, please feel free to give me a call.
Thank you. Job description, Mrs. Bells?
Thank you, Mr. President. Administration presents two point twenty-one point three, Coordinator of Alternative Education slash Homeless as a first reading.
Okay. All right. E, uh, the no fun one. Uh, Director Kreider has announced her resignation from the Waynesville R-six Board of Education effective immediately. Therefore, the Board of Education is officially declaring a vacancy on the board, which will be filled through the appointment process described in policy BBE dash one. There will be an application process to fill the vacant position to complete Director Kreider's term, uh, which lasts until April of twenty twenty-one, school board election. The application window for, uh, position will open tomorrow morning, January twenty-seven, twenty-second, twenty twenty and close at four o'clock PM on February fifth, twenty twenty. Interested patrons may visit, visit the district administrator, administration building between seven-thirty and four, Monday through Friday to retrieve an applicant, uh, application packet. Got cold. Applications will be completed and returned to the administration building during regular office hours and no applications will be accepted after four o'clock PM on February fifth, twenty twenty. I'd like to take a minute and thank Janet for her service, uh, she will be missed. We will move on to the action items. Uh, action I, A, budget.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. President. And, uh, Mr. Harrison's got my slide deck powered up there, but before we head that way, I know, I did not bring my budget book. It's in the, my bag in there. I know, uh, I saw that, uh, Dr. Henry got his. Uh, it's typically eighty, a hundred pages. I don't need it, just, just showing it there and, uh, thank you. Uh, you can refer to that for specifics. Uh, presentation will outline those things, uh, that are contained in the budget. Always welcome any patrons, board members, uh, typically get, uh, people that are taking grad classes in for any questions, uh, with anything that we cover tonight or anything further. It gets, uh, simple if we break it down and oftentimes that's, uh, I think folks are surprised how easy it is when we do break it down. So we'll get started, uh, here. Uh, the board's financial governing documents. I know, uh, we had MSBA, MSBA in last week and they were talking about the governing documents in the realm of finance. These are those. Uh, the district budget, which is, uh, passed, uh, in July, amendments, which we'll be doing tonight, the audit, which was presented last, uh, month and the ASBR. One last look at FY nineteen's ASBR and we also looked at this, uh, last week in work session, but orientate you to, a bit to this. Incidental, that's, uh, just about everything comes out of that except for teacher. So this would be a, like, non-certified salary and benefits and really kind of everything else. Teacher salary and benefits out of the fund two combined, that's, uh, termed operations. So that's the operational budget. Debt service, I always point this out at any opportunity I can. You see all those zeros because our district is a rarity. We do not have a debt service of no general obligation bonds out. The average general obligation, uh, bond, the average rate for debt service in Missouri of the five hundred and sixteen school districts is forty-nine cents. Our proposition one was only twenty cents and the average district has forty-nine cents, uh, running through that. Capital outlay, fund for building construction, property acquisition, uh, buses, big purchases. Uh, so, uh, again, we're, you, sometimes operating kind of out of three years, we're closing FY nineteen and this is really going to be the last look at it. Uh, we are in FY twenty and now that the calendar has changed, we're, you know, starting to think about FY twenty-one. But focusing back to the, the amendment for tonight that pertains to FY twenty, local revenues look strong. Uh, really the budget overall looks really good. Looks like another good fiscal year if everything holds. Uh, this eighteen million dollar total, but I was going to, uh, circle this. This is the property tax. So we generate about nine point four million dollars from that two ninety-five levy. That's the amount that the local patrons are paying. This Prop C is one that I probably have a little bit, uh, conservatively, uh, budgeted and that's, uh, it's in local, it's, 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 uh, complex, there's a history to it, but that's the statewide sales tax. So statewide, uh, sales tax in general can be kind of volatile, so, uh, typically we'll budget quite conservatively in that line. Speaking of, uh, tax rate and local property tax, you've seen this slide over and over. I've added a couple of numbers to it, but our, our district patrons do indeed get a, quite a bargain in the Waynesville R-six school district. Four hundred and eighty-five of the five hundred and sixteen school districts in the state have a tire, have a higher tax rate than Waynesville. Uh, Prop one, I mentioned Prop one, that was that twenty cent sales tax, or excuse me, sales tax, property tax, uh, in two thousand and seventeen, that generated about six hundred thousand dollars and we obligated that six hundred thousand dollars to, uh, accelerating the PBL that, uh, Mr. Henson just spoke about and, uh, security. And that again is in the budget at three hundred and sixty-six thousand and two hundred and thirty-three thousand respectively. Moving to state revenues, uh, again, a little conservative on this. I think we're going to do a little bit better. This is a basic formula. It's a, a big revenue for us. You can see that thirty million dollars and, uh, the trending out, you know, I think that's going to be pretty much on mark, but if I was looking in the magic, uh, uh, in the, looking at the magic eight ball, uh, right now, I'd say we'll do a little bit better than that, probably in basic formula. Everything holds. Federal revenues, um, and, uh, the board has heard me, uh, say that over and over again. We are always very conservative on this. Now, this fiscal year, things look good and I'll, uh, drill down on that, uh, point in just a moment, but, uh, it's just a place that, uh, impact aid is budgeted in the year current. So we, we start our budget year in, uh, July and we really don't know what impact aid's going to look like for a couple of months after that. And really, it's usually based on, uh, short-term funding bills, continuing resolutions. So throughout the year, maybe three, four, five times, uh, throughout the year, typically we still don't know the clear picture of impact aid and they give it to us in a prorated basis as the year moves on. Uh, typically at the end of that fiscal year, uh, the state's fiscal year and the federal fiscal year, we're doing pretty, we look pretty good in that, as that's kind of, uh, points out here historically. But it is one, one, uh, one revenue source that we just do not get very aggressive with at all. Uh, we were talking in study session about the operational budget and what percentage makes, is made up of salaries and benefits makes up the operational budget. And I believe, uh, the winner of that was, uh, Mr. Keedling at about seventy-nine point nine percent. So he was really close on that and you see how our other operating expenses break out. Expenses, uh, drilling down into that employees and, uh, benefits, you can see our, uh, fiscal year twenty update and looking historically, that's, uh, we also look at things on a quarterly basis. I mean, we're looking at things literally every day, uh, month, a little more so, but quarterly we run reports to make sure everything's tracking out. When we get to January, we formalize those in a January amendment. This one, uh, at first we'll give you a little bit of sticker shock and, and I can speak to it just a little bit, but this is expenses for purchases, purchase services and supplies. First of all, to tell you that, uh, since the coding changes, uh, it's a little more difficult for me to, I want things in Fund Four. It helps us for our impact aid eligibility. I've spoke to the board about that. We'll actually do a June revision where we'll do a lot of work to get things out of supply and into Fund Four. Um, like, again, it, uh, solidifies our eligibility for impact aid. But a other couple, a couple of things that are escalating this number is we have about a million dollars in DODIA that is obligated here. Uh, it's, it's budgeted out as an expense. We're not even sure that that's going to spend out this fiscal year, but, uh, Dr. Atkins has it budgeted there. Couple of other things that, uh, move this a little bit. I mentioned one of trying to get things into Fund Four at the end of the year. We'll start that work much later, uh, May, June. Uh, but another thing is we oftentimes have staff, like, uh, speech paths and if Dr. Washington is having difficulty finding those positions, we will contract that out. And we've had, you know, it swings quite a bit and it has since I've been here. It's just based on what we can find. And then another thing, uh, Ms. Bells and then, well, uh, Mr. Smith before her and now Dr. Washington, always look at what's going to be cheaper for the district and it might swing to purchase services that year based on our need. It might swing to staffing and in this particular year, it's swung to, uh, purchase services. So we have, uh, quite a few of those that have moved from staffing to purchase services, kind of escalating that number. I, I hope that number, I expect that number to be a little lower, uh, at the end of the fiscal year, but that's one we'll keep an eye on. Food service expenditure, you'll note, uh, typically I'm going to budget revenues very conservatively and I'm going to be pretty aggressive with expenditures, but I'm motivated to kind of keep this one in check at that three million dollars because, uh, we're with the third-party contractor. So that's the goal. Uh, you know, I think we're going to get close to that. I'm hopeful. A lot of that, you know, can be skewed because of participation's up. Obviously the cost is going to be up and, uh, so, you know, that's not a problem if, if both those things, uh, go up together. If, uh, the expenditure goes down and the, and, and we're not putting out as many lunches and I'm not getting as much revenue, we got to drill down that. But, uh, so far we've been trending it, taking our food service program out of nearly a million dollars in the red and getting it to about a hundred thousand dollars in the black. So we'll seek to do that again this year. New program that we have is the after-school super snack. Uh, I have it actually budgeted on a different line, uh, than regular lunch, so we can kind of track it, but this is what it's doing so far. The expenses, uh, I, uh, presented this to the board when I did the budget, the, the expense, um, per meal and the revenue we would get, and that looks pretty good and it's playing out to be pretty good. Uh, now, the thing that I'm just going to plant a little, a few seeds of caution is we cert, we were coming into fiscal year twenty, the current year, we were successful of getting a school identified at fifty percent free and reduced lunch, which basically qualified all of our schools to take advantage of this program. So it's running well in the black and we need it to, uh, because right now we're having difficulty getting that school qualified again and the, the, the benchmark is fifty percent. So we've got Freedom who doesn't qualify all the schools. They've hit the, the mark and we're still going to need to put some effort into East Elementary. Those are, are big fish for us, so to speak. If I can get East at fifty percent benchmark anytime this year, any single day, uh, that will, uh, qualify our, our sixth grade center, middle school and high school also. We're still optimistic to do that, though, you know, the months keep ticking, uh, by and we've, we haven't been able to, uh, get East quite there. So we'll continue to monitor that, but point being to run it this much in the black may be very important if we're going to subsidize schools next year. If I can't get all those schools, I'll have to bring something to the board that says I can either run it at level or I'm going to run it slightly in the red or perhaps in the black again if we can get those, uh, schools, uh, qual, if we can get, I shouldn't say those schools, if I can get East Elementary qualified. Any of those single schools qualifying them gets that single school eligible, but it's very important for us to get East. And even absent of getting East to that fifty percent benchmark, uh, you know, we may be able to put a pretty good dent in the expenditure by running the others, uh, by running the entire program in the black. So apologize for getting a little bit in the weeds there, but I wanted to sow, again, a few seeds of caution and I'll be updating the board on that this spring. Transportation expenditure, we raised up just a little bit for FY nineteen. We've got it targeted to be three point seven. It's going to be really close to that. We're, we're, uh, doing a really good job of, uh, looking at how the fifty-two line formula in transportation. Mr. Wilkins had a great job of, of kind of analyzing that and seeing where we can help some variables in that calculation to, to generate some revenue, so. Uh, expenses, capital projects, of course, uh, we know this number's going to be inflated this, this, uh, for FY twenty. Could leak over to in, uh, FY twenty-one. In this, uh, chart, you see, uh, we've got our principal and interest for our lease purchases, uh, in there at that one point four million, which is about one point five million year in, year out. And then, uh, but the one-time expense there, of course, is Waynesville Middle School Phase And, uh, here's a, a little detail on, and another thing I should have mentioned back on that slide where the supply professional tech was escalated, I forgot to mention. We also have, uh, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, much of which is supply. I'll be trying to get a lot of that into equipment at the end of the year, but much of that will be in supply to kind of get us, uh, equipped for the, for the new phase two portion of the middle school. Again, uh, kind of anticipate, uh, that nineteen million dollars, you know, to, to roll over into past July, so we may shut that down at actual at, you know, seventeen-five, sixteen-five, budgeted into FY twenty-one and pay it. So those things are always kind of tricky at the end of the fiscal year to navigate, but we'll, we'll get it done. Total expenditure is elevated, ninety-five million, ninety-five point five, again, uh, predominantly due to Waynesville Middle School. Here's phase one at that eighty-five billion dollars, uh, which carried off into the, both years beside it to it a little bit, but, uh... And then finally, you know, I do a little bit of forecasting and really it's not my forecasting. I guess I'm kind of the hopper and I spit it out, but I'll give you, overall, very optimistic. Really good last two years, FY nineteen, FY twenty were probably two of the more optimistic years, local, state, federal revenues that I've, uh, been part of. Uh, but I'll give you just a little bit of caution too. So the, uh, Governor Parsons Budget Director, uh, announced and that's just great news and, uh, that twenty nineteen fiscal year to date increased five point two compared to FY eighteen. So that's great, five point two. Uh, the, the, just a little bit of, uh, bit of caution is Missouri budget projects. What is Missouri project, Missouri budget project? It's, uh, what would be termed a think tank. It's a policy analysis organization, nonpartisan, uh, group that puts out a lot of information and they're constantly analyzing, uh, state statistics. And you can see from there that, uh, they totally agree that, uh, year to date off from previous year, the state is fiscally doing much better, but also says Missouri State General Revenue Collections grew well below the pace needed to account for inflation. So just a little bit of caution there.[1770.16] So, just a little bit of caution there. And federal news for us is pretty exceptional this year. I mentioned earlier that we often run off continuing resolutions or CRs multiple times throughout the year. This year, we don't have to worry about it. For the rest of the fiscal year, the money is appropriated and in fact, was appropriated for Impact Aid or the Department of Ed, which funnels down to Impact Aid as an increase. So, it's in terms of federal revenues that, you know, that's going to certainly hit Impact Aid. It's also going to hit Dr. Atkins's title programs. All that is really good news and no more CRs for the Labor, Health and Human Services slash Education spending bill. And so, how does the year wrap? Well, we don't know because it's all guesswork at this point. But if the, if the budget, you know, holds relatively speaking, we're in great shape. So, estimated balance of sixteen point two in operations. Again, that's Fund One or Fund Two, incidental or teacher's fund. That sets us right at twenty-five percent again, which is the, actually about five percent above our base target set by policy. Capital outlay, you know, we're going to spend, we're going to spend some dollars this year because of Waynesville Middle School. But again, this number, twenty-four million dollars, that puts us in great shape to meet all the objectives of our facility plan. So, worked a little bit on that last week in study session. We'll be bringing you a revised version of that in the upcoming months. But if all things hold, that twenty-four million dollars certainly puts us in great fiscal condition. And totaling that forty million point three or forty point three. So, all in all, FY twenty here at the midpoint, really wrapping up to be a good year. Be glad to entertain any questions the board has now. And certainly, if anything comes up, please do not hesitate to come by, call, email, anything else.
Any comments or questions?
Mr. President?
Do I have a motion to approve the annual school board budget?
I'll make that motion.
Kane makes the motion. Second. Mr. Quinn, second. All favor show hands. Motion carries. Annual school board election ballot. Dr. Henry?
Thank you, Mr. President. The final date to file for the Board of Education was today at five PM. The proposed ballot format of board candidates for the April seventh, 2020 election will be submitted to the Plaski County Clerk prior to the deadline of January twenty-eighth of 2020. We do have three seats available and then we have seven candidates. We have Dr. Leroy Fulmer, Mr. Mike Keeling, Mr. Dan Dearing, Mrs. Jocelyn Gutowski, Mr. Andy Anderson, Dr. Charles Slider, and Mr. Rick Horn.
Do I have a motion to approve the election ballot? Potter makes a motion. I have a second. Mr. Dearing, second. All favor show hands. Motion carries. Summer school proposal. Dr. Atkins?
Thank you, Mr. President. The 2020 summer school program will be conducted from June first to June twenty-six, provided each building has sufficient number. Summer school will be held at each of our sites and all sites will serve breakfast and lunch. A limited number of virtual course offerings will also be offered. Administration requests a motion to approve the 2020 summer school proposal as presented.
Do I have a motion for the 2020 summer school proposal? Dr. Fulmer makes the motion. I have a second. Mr. Dearing, second. All favor show hands. Proposed course description book changes. Dr. Atkins?
Thank you, Mr. President. Attached to the recommended changes to the Waynesville High School Course Description Book submitted by Mr. Lubert, the high school principal, and if approved, these changes will become effective with the 2021 school year and utilized in the upcoming scheduling process. The changes include realignment of our Family and Consumer Science classes and content, as well as the addition of several courses in that strand. And also, we are bringing an expansion, proposing an expansion of the OTC Fast Track Program. Currently, we offer criminal justice. We would also like to offer an education strand for students who are interested in becoming educators, that they could get started on their coursework while still in high school. Administration recommends approval of the proposed course description book changes as presented.
Do I have a motion? Mr. Potter makes a motion. I have a second. Mr. Quinn, all favor show hands. Motion carries. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Got me. I'll second that. All favor show hands. Thank you all very much.